Well, good evening. I'm Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Temecula, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. This time, Erin Adams is going to give our invocation, followed by the flag salute, and I will do that. So if you will please stand with me for the invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Would you please bow your heads with me? Heavenly Father, Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the blessing to reside and work in the City of Temecula. Lord, this is a difficult time for so many. COVID-19, its infliction on people, on finances, on jobs, on stresses and families. Lord, we just lift up all those that are being impacted in our city, our state, our country, our world, Lord, and just ask that you just wrap your arms around them during these difficult times. We pray for continued good health for city employees and our first responders and our city council, Lord. Just be with us this evening in the business of Temecula. Pray for wisdom, discernment for each of the council members, and of course, good health for them as well as our police and fire personnel. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Erin. So if you please put your right hand over your heart and find a flag to look at and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Okay, Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
All right. Thank you. So we're coming to you again, you know, virtually. So welcome to your computer screen, your phone, your iPad. And do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, we do have two public comments.
All right. So I'm going to read this. "A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda." And of course, that would be the COVID announcement. And so the city clerk will be reading the public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards. The first comment is from Patty Castillo of the Temecula Valley Women's Club. She writes, "On October 6, 2020, the Temecula Valley Women's Club is celebrating their 40th anniversary. TBWC is an international organization dedicated to the improvement of the educational, ethical, and cultural life of the community through volunteer service. In the early years, TBWC raised funds through cupcake and bake sales, rummage sales, and fashion shows, and ultimately, the annual Holiday Home Tour and Gala. Throughout our history, we have contributed over $2.5 million in community projects, over $500,000 in educational scholarships, and over 1.5 million hours in community service. Some of our projects include Temecula Valley Library Foundation, Ronald Reagan Sports Park, Leechersburg Temecula Valley High School Football Stadium, Temecula Valley Museum Foundation, Temecula Community Recreation Center Building Foundation, Safe Alternatives for Everyone, and college scholarships for Temecula and Marietta High School seniors. For the past 35 years, TBWC has hosted our biggest fundraiser, the Annual Holiday Home Tour, whereby we raise funds to help local high schools achieve their dreams of a college education. Sadly, due to the health crisis, we are unable to host the Holiday Home Tour this year. TBWC's annual Holiday Home Tour may be canceled, but the TBWC scholarship tradition is not. This year, TBWC will raise funds for scholarships through our charity GoFundMe campaign, Help Them Dream Big. For more information in investing in a local student stream, please visit our website at tbwc.com. We appreciate the community's support as we strive to continue helping our local students achieve their goals. As we enter our 40th year, we are proud of the accomplishments and contributions of our members and that they have made to the community over the years. The support and assistance of the cities, businesses, and citizens of our valley allow us to continue to make an impact on the community and make the Temecula Valley a special place to live." The second comment and final comment is from Melinda Fuzesi. "I'm a concerned citizen. My name is Melinda Fuzesi. I am concerned about a proposition coming out in November. That is Proposition 16. Proposition 16 permits the government to discriminate based on race or gender. This is clearly illegal, and we request our elected officials to take a position against it. Oddly, supporters of Proposition 16 state that Proposition 16 benefits people of color and education and government contracting. But where is the language in the proposition that says that? Instead, the proposition merely eliminates the California Constitution that says you cannot base on race or gender. That is why, that is the reason why the residents of the city are against Proposition 16. We must stand against racism in all forms. Please read this comment aloud at the next city council meeting and general comment sessions. Thank you." Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Randy. Well, if the women's club members were here, I would be talking to them right now and thanking them for everything they've done for, first, the community of Temecula, because they predate the community or the City of Temecula, and then the City of Temecula. And what Randy read is just a small portion of everything that they have done for this city and for the nonprofits here and individuals. You know, the women's club, in the early, early days, literally everyone in town belonged to it. And it was the thing to do. There wasn't a lot to do here. And the women's club was so busy and so positive and still making a difference today. So on behalf of the City of Temecula, I know some of them are probably watching, so thanks, you guys. The city wouldn't be the same without you. Just look at everything that you've contributed to and helped us build. So congratulations. I can't believe it's been 40 years, especially when we don't look any older. So thanks, you guys. Right. Moving on, city council reports, anything? No? I better turn my volume up now. Okay, so nothing?
Oh, one for me, real quick.
Oh, go ahead, Matt. Sorry. I've got your volume up. Talk louder, please.
No problem. There's two quick things. One of those is, I would like to ask if staff would take a look at our food truck ordinance and maybe identify an opportunity to establish something here in Temecula with regard to food trucks, but with sort of specific parameters that would help mitigate any competition with our amazing brick and mortar establishments that are already there. We've had some requests with that regard, and I know we're, you know, a little bit constrained on what we have in the city available right now. So be curious to see what our opportunities might be and maybe back for future discussion. The second item, and more important one, is for us to, and if you wouldn't mind indulging me for a moment, I'd like to see if everybody would allow me to ask our esteemed city manager to evaluate the naming of the Margarita, Future Margarita Community Center and/or Park after our colleague Mike Nigar. I'd like to honor his 23 years of service to the city and the legacy that he's had within our community. And I think that's a very appropriate, given your commitment and hard work with the special needs community in particular. I'd like to see if we can't find an appropriate way to commemorate your years with this city. And then, Mike, you know, thinking about the spirit of what you've done over the decades here and a lot of your purpose and hard for that, I'd also like to see if we can't work with Erin and your staff to find an appropriate location for something that I'd like to call Liam's Place.
I love that.
And, you know, I know that's a real important part of, Mike, why you did what you did in our community. And so I'd like to acknowledge that as well, if we could.
Well, of course, we can't talk about it this evening, but we have consensus for city manager for you to take that and run with it, if you will, and come back to us with your report. Mike, I'm not going to ask you right now to come. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm rather speechless, and I need to absorb that. And I thank you for, Matt, for even thinking of that as a high honor. If the city attorney could evaluate if I have a conflict, if that occurs, if I'm operating a food truck at Margarita Park. Because I'm always thinking, Matt, okay, I think we can, anyway, it's an inside, you got it. I'm just kind of speechless. Thank you.
Separated by distance, not protected from the bad jokes. Okay, so I think that's wonderful. Erin, you have that request from Councilmember Ron, and I think it's a great idea. So thank you very much, and thank you, Matt. Anybody else? No? Okay. And we're going to move on to the consent calendar. "All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, wave reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes, August 25, 2020. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, adopt ordinance 2020-07, amending section 10.24.040 of the Municipal Code Regarding Bicycles on Sidewalks. This is the second reading. Number five, approve city treasurer's report as of July 31, 2020. Number six, approve memorandum of understanding, which is MLU, between the City of Temecula and Teamsters Local 911. Number seven, accept notice of draft amendments for the 2020 Conflict of Interest Code. Number eight, amend capital improvement program, CIP, for fiscal years 2021 through '25, to add the Nicholas Road Multi-Use Trail Extension Project and approve related transfer of funds. Number nine, adopt resolution establishing all way stop controls at intersections of Old Town Front Street at Second, Fourth, and Fifth Streets." And that is all public, that is all the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything? If not, I will accept a motion.
Move consent. Oh, second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Do you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So I am going to recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of Temecula Community Services District Successor Agency, Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority. And so, take it away, President Schwank.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Since we remain in the virtual setting, would you please call the roll again?
Yes, Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
President Schwank?
And I'm here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I'll dispense with the reading of the rolls, and I'll move on to our consent calendar. "All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 10, approve the action minutes of August 25, 2020."
With approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
President Schwank?
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes 4-0. Community Services Directors Report, Director Hawkins.
Good evening, Mr. President. You know, although it doesn't seem like we had a spring and a summer, but today is the first day of fall. Like other city departments, TCSD will continue to offer an array of programs, services, events, and activities that create the high quality of life enjoyed here in Temecula. Commission Chair Levine will detail a little bit more in his report later, and that concludes my report.
And thank you. Looking forward to that report. And I know the team's hard at work for the fall and the winter season, so looking forward to what's ahead. General Managers' report tonight?
Nothing further tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any directors' reports? Nope. All right. I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the Tuesday, October 13th meeting. We are adjourned.
All right. So I am going to convene the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Oh, no, that's no meeting. I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. And we have a public hearing this evening, so I'll go ahead and read. "Any person may submit written comments to the city council before or during a public hearing in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed in the important notice at the top of this agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues. You or someone else raised in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to public hearing." So we are at item number 11, introduce an ordinance amending Title 1, Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code related to the administration of land use entitlements and permits, including permit revocations, long-range planning application number LR 200265. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, city council. Tonight, I'm presenting Title 1 and Title 17 updates for the city council. Just a little background on this. From time to time, the city council improves and updates the municipal code. And then, under the proposed amendments, we're looking at replacing secondary dwelling unit language with accessory dwelling unit language. This is a like-for-like swap. We're just updating the terms for more current naming conventions. We're also looking at the revocation process updates for temporary use permits, home occupation permits, development plans, conditional use permits, and other similar entitlements. And finally, we're looking at doing a clarification for modification applications. So for revocation process updates, staff worked with the city attorney's office to identify improvements. We really learned these improvements from our previous massage ordinance, and we just want to update some antiquated portions of our municipal code. So for example, if you've got a temporary use permit currently, they're approved by the director, and they typically last a few days. And if we do have an issue with the temporary use permit, we do need the ability to revoke these permits. Under the current municipal code, we would have to go to the Planning Commission or city council to revoke these types of permits. And we want to ensure we're able to do this more quickly. So this update would allow the director to revoke temporary use permits. Again, this is as a last resort, but if there was an appeal, it would still come before the Planning Commission. Home occupation permits, again, they're currently approved by the director, and these are permits that are supposed to allow for people to have businesses in their home. But we don't want those businesses to negatively impact their neighbors. So for instance, if someone started a dog walking business and it turned into a dog kennel, again, that's where the permit is no longer within that home occupation realm. Under the current process, it would take the Planning Commission or city council to revoke the permit, and we just want to make some updates that would allow the director to revoke this permit as a last resort. Again, this expedites the ability to deal with time-sensitive issues, but any appeals would still come before the Planning Commission. For development plans, CPs, and other similar permits, we would update the process to remove some of the highly technical requirements with a revocation process from the Planning Commission. So currently, these revocations go to the Planning Commission, but they would have to handle all the judicial proceedings. We want to update it so that an independent hearing officer, which would be an experienced judge or retired hearing officer, would oversee this process. This is what we're using for massage permits now, and it's been working well. Again, this purpose is to remove those highly technical requirements from the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission would still be involved with the revocation process, and the city council could obviously be involved if it was further appealed. For the modification clarification, the proposed ordinance would add floor area to the description of major and minor modifications. So if a project is adding interior floor space, for example, mezzanine, we need to be able to evaluate it against parking, floor area ratios, and other outside agency requirements. And that's what that changes for. So with that, staff is recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amending Title 1 and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. And under the SEQA exemptions for, SEQA exemptions 15378B5 and 15061, again, the Planning Commission did recommend the adoption of the ordinance on August 5, 2020. And with that, staff's available to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, you're muted.
The most often-spoken phrase of the year. You're muted. Okay, so any comments, gentlemen, or questions? None? All right, then, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on item number 11. And since there's not a soul in the room but Randy and I, and there's nothing recorded or requested today, so...
Yes, we have not received for the record any emails on this item.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain comments or a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. And could we call the roll, please?
Wait. Either the city clerk or I needs to read the title of the ordinance.
All right. You can duke it out.
Okay. I'll read it. "This is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Temecula amending titles 1 and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code relating to the administration and revocation of land use entitlements and other permits, and finding that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA guidelines, sections 15378B5 and 15061B3."
All right. Thank you, people.
Go ahead and take the roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So we have departmental reports, and that's a receive and file. And is the fire department here with us? They've been so busy.
I think we have commission reports next, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards.
Well, commission reports is after what I'm looking at. Yeah, I've got departmental reports first.
Those are just receiv-
Those are receiv- All of them are receiving file. Okay. Well, gee whiz, you'd think I'd know how to do this by now. So we've got commissioners. I do see commissioners are here. So Eric, can I start with you?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards, city council members, staff, colleagues, and the community. As Chair of the Community Services Commission, I have the pleasure of reporting tonight. On behalf of the arts and cultural programming our city is able to offer in person and virtually during these times. This year, the City of Temecula is collaborating with the City of Marietta to host the Fourth Annual Halloween Home Decorating Contest. Homes will be judged based on the category of their choice, including scariest slash slash most humorous, best theme. And you will register at temeculacca.gov/register to enter this year's contest beginning October 1, 2020. Second item, Old Town Temecula Community Theater turns 15 on Sunday, October 4. Our gift to the community is a free virtual anniversary concert by Aloha Series favorite, Ami Hanai Ali'i.
Very good.
Right? It'll be at 2:00 PM streaming on Facebook.com/TemeculaTheater and YouTube. Nearly 800,000 patrons have visited Temecula's state-of-the-art theater since opening October 4, 2005. Third item tonight, Temecula Valley Museum's very popular second Saturday programming continues by celebrating Germany with a virtual Oktoberfest featuring recipes, cultural facts, and complimentary art lesson taught live on Zoom by Tony M. from Bigfoot Art Classes, Saturday, October 10, 11:00 AM. And finally, we're back with a new episode of Around and About Temecula. Episode 22 features Temeculadee, Temecula Community Service Department's summer outreach programs from our Homes Human Services Division, classes and activities, and the spooktacular Halloween contest. Tune in to find out what is happening online at temeculacca.gov/aroundtemecula. Stay healthy, safe, and connected, Temecula. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions? None. So Linay, I see Linay here for Planning Commission. Hi, Linay.
Hello. Good to see you guys. So I don't have any fancy PowerPoint, but Planning Commission has been busy. At our last meeting, we voted on an amendment to the capital improvement program, which is kind of exciting, very exciting, actually, for Nicholas Road Multi-Use Trail Extension. So now that is connected, like we've been waiting forever. And so that's really an awesome thing that we were able to vote on, and I'm sure that will be coming to you, to the city council. And then the second thing that we voted on was there is going to be a new Mexican restaurant in the Truax Building called Margaritas, always happy to have Mexican food. And they are going to be having mariachis as their live entertainment, I think from 8:00 to 10:00 PM on the weekend. And so we voted on that and a type 47 license for them. So we congratulated them on being brave and opening a restaurant during this time, which is pretty amazing. And so that's good to see in our city that there are people out there wanting to do that. So that is my report for Planning Commission. Any questions?
Any questions? Just a hop, skip, and a jump from City Hall.
That's right.
So no questions? Nobody?
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome.
So I'm searching, searching, searching. Hi, Brad.
Hi. How are you doing, everybody?
How are you?
Great. Thank you. The last Traffic Safety Commission, we moved the recommendation which you passed tonight on the always stop signs, additional stop signs in crosswalks in Old Town. And then, on a personal note, my family's adding another resident, as we speak right now, to the City of Temecula. My daughter's at Inland Valley in labor, and sometime tonight, my grandchild will be born.
So if you're going to announce, I have a new grandson, too.
Congratulations.
But it's been, what, four weeks now? Just coming up on four weeks. So, and he's in Texas. But, you know, it is true, Texans are born with their spurs on, so I'll just tell you that. All right. So, all right. So now we can move on. Now I can turn the page. So we do have a public safety report from Captain Hall.
Good evening, everybody. I'll go through the staffs real quick. I would assume the PowerPoint is up.
It is.
We generated 6,676 file numbers in August. In our traffic bureau, we issued 1,307 citations, made 43 DUI arrests, and responded to 55 traffic collisions. Our special team statistics, they made 18 felony arrests onsite, served 17 felony arrest warrants, made 69 misdemeanor onsite arrests, and served 111 misdemeanor warrants. The investigative bureau was assigned 31 cases and closed 28. In the mall, they had 73 calls for service, made zero felony arrests, and two misdemeanor arrests. We had a total of 591 volunteer hours in August, and the previous month was at 308. So as we start to kind of come out of COVID, we start to see things starting to pick up in the city. I have nothing else to report.
Well, you're certainly staying on top of everything. And we can't say enough about our police department and how, what a great job they do making Temecula the 19th safest city in the United States. So that is some accomplishment, and we can thank them for it. And our residents who love Temecula and are very obedient to the law. So thank you, residents. And thank you to the police volunteers, too, because I know you guys couldn't do it without them. So for everything you guys do, thank you. Mr. City Manager, anything?
Just one item. Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Riverside County has been waiting for a very long time for this day to come. But earlier today, Riverside County Health Department, through cooperation with the governor's office, announced that we, as a county, will be moving, we were approved, to move into Tier 2, which is one tier below where we're at, which allows for some additional openings of our local economy and occupancies. And for example, 25% in dining and restaurants is now permitted, as well as retail and the mall. And so you can see on the screen there, there was quite a bit of movement in getting to this. Now, the important thing is, is that we hopefully can stay in this tier and work towards continued movement. So hats off to the residents of Temecula, Riverside County, for doing what they needed to do to move our metrics, our numbers, to allow us to move into Tier 2. So good news today. Thank you.
I can tell you that, you know, I've been to a couple of other cities in the last three weeks and had a chance to go in retail businesses. And there were, it was widespread people not wearing their masks. But everywhere you go in Temecula, people are wearing their masks, virtually everyone. So, and that really has made the difference. So it's brought us to Stage 2, and we're very glad for that. So thank you, residents. City Attorney Report, Peter.
Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council have one matter to report from closed session tonight. I'm very pleased to report that on the motion of Councilmember Ron, seconded by Councilmember Schwank, the city council approved the settlement agreement in the Altera Project litigation. The vote was four to zero. The motion was to approve the settlement agreement, authorize the city manager to sign it. That agreement will be available for public review in about a month, once all of the other parties to the litigation have signed it, and then, we will make it available for public review or public copying, and people can see what's involved there. So, it's a long, long road to get to this point, so we're very pleased with the help of the council, particularly Councilmember Ron, to get that settlement put together. No other actions to report from closed session.
Thank you, Peter, and great job on Altera. Matt, thank you. Mike's got a comment?
Yeah, I did, because it bears mentioning, this project brings a lot of infrastructure, and it also brings a lot of trail, and it preserves quite a bit of open space. And it also, it brings the Western bypass, which is really something the city set out to do almost 30 years ago, which literally is going to be able to circle the city. Matt, Ron completing those negotiations is monumental. So, it needed to be said.
See, Matt, you should have worn your cowboy hat for that, because you earned it. And there, yep, and there it is. So, thank you for everything that you did, working with Peter and, you know, his firm. So, now happy your hat's, you know, missing on your blue screen, but that's, oh, there you go. So, thank you. Gentlemen, that is all I have, so I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.